Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee Meeting of November 26, 2019. At this time, I will take a motion to open the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Move by Gordon, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome back, Kiara. So we have you right off the top.
Yeah, so there were a couple of student concerns from the past, over the past two weeks. The number one, well, the first one that I have is the confusion over our IDs purpose. We know that they are to identify the students and so that each student has a way to identify themselves within the building. But the school, the Student Advisory Committee believes that they can be used for a better purpose. One proposed idea was when you're buying your lunch, you have to plug in a key number, a keyword or a key number. And the Student Advisory Committee believes that it would be best to use our IDs to simply swipe and we can pay through that. However, that's not what we have, although it makes a little bit more sense to. Secondly, in reference to Ms. Fisher's technology presentation last week, or two weeks ago, there were a little bit concerns about how currently in the school, we do not, not all high school students have working Chromebooks. For many of them, they need to plug in for them to even turn on and to stay on. And IT is not helping students when they go to them to address these matters. They're not, many of them get turned away or promised Chromebooks at a later date that just never come. In my experience, there are at least three students per class where they need to be sitting by a wall with their Chromebook plugged in to even be able to do that day's work. Secondly, and also in reference to last meeting and the idea for a graduate, the Student Advisory Committee believes that it is very important to get a student's idea on it, to get a student's voice, because we're the ones who are taking the classes, we're the ones who actually become the graduate. And so I, we think that even talking to current seniors and even talking to past graduates of what they would have wanted from East Bridgewater would be very helpful in developing that. Do you have some few club updates?
The student IDs, I will discuss. The Chromebook issue, I need more information on that to come forward, because we went through this in September, now we're here again. If that, I need to, I need more information on that so that I can get to the root of that, to find out what's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is what we're, this is what we're hearing from it now, so I just need more information. The NEAS, the Vision of the Graduate, that was done by the Building Principal and the teachers and all of the, all of the subcommittees over the last year and a half. So my suggestion of that, and I will bring this to Mr. Sylvia, but my suggestion is that the Subcommittee that did the Vision of the Graduate needs to come back together and bring the student voice in. I certainly agree with you, I'm not saying that I don't agree, but that was put forth by the Subcommittee through the Principal and was sent off. And that got the faculty's agreement to that. I don't have anything to do with that. However, I will certainly bring this back to Mr. Sylvia so he can bring it back to the table. Okay? Because he does have some time till March that he's working with NEAS, so I'm sure they can bring it back to the table.
Awesome.
Okay? I'll just, I'll take a little bit at a little bit as we go forward.
If there's no other points about that, I'd like to move on to-
Yeah, go ahead.
-club updates. So our Med Club is holding a bake sale on Wednesday, our LGBTQ+ Club is holding a holiday social on December 9th. We, I'd like to take time to congratulate our band and chorus students who auditioned for districts, and I believe quite a few of them actually made it through. Student Senate is planning for the blood drive on December 6th. Triumph is planning caroling for a fundraiser. So basically how it works is that you can schedule a different music group to come to your house the weekend of the 19th and 20th to perform either carols or Christmas melodies. And if you would like to, you can come listen to them at the East Bridgewater Public Library at 6:30 on December 12th. Continuing that, the next math team competition is December, is on December 5th, and it's right here in this building. Math and the NHS induction is on December 3rd, National Honor Society.
Yes. See, you're going to be, you're going to open that up?
Kiara, what are the hours for the blood drive?
Blood drive, I believe, is running from 8:00 in the morning to about 12:00 p.m.
Is that here at the school?
It's at the school.
Can anybody go to that, or only kids and faculty do you know?
Anybody can go.
And the bake sale?
The bake sale?
The bake sale.
That's going to be held during all high school lunches.
Okay.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
And then, did you say, I was taking notes before, so caroling or who, what did you say about the 19th and 20th?
Yeah, so Triumph Music Honor Society, they do a, every year they do caroling, you know, like we have Holly Harmonies, which is a choir group. We have, and then we have various music instruments creating for just different, like Christmas melodies. And it's the weekend of the 19th and the, not the 19th, I apologize, the 13th and the 20th.
13th and 20th? And then, and how do you get in touch with them if you want to sign up to have them come to your house?
There will be flyers at the East Bridgewater Music Parents Association table at Christmas on the Convent.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that, that was a wealth of information. And next up, we have, next up, we have the update from Standing and Subcommittees. And we have, so on the Budget Subcommittee, we'll be scheduling meetings soon, within the next couple of weeks. And also, the Policy Subcommittee, we went through Section A, and there were some minor tweaks. And then Section B, we're still working on it, there's some changes and some questions that needed to be answered. And then with the School Committee Goals Subcommittee, they're going to be tweaked and they should be brought to you either in December or January. And then, I didn't know, there's the Educational Philosophy Subcommittee, I thought that-
Work in progress still.
And I think that's it for Subcommittee's. You haven't started up yet for the-
Educational Philosophy?
No.
Capital?
Yeah, Capital Plan, Capital Needs, no, nothing. When does that start?
I haven't heard from Glenn yet, but I'm going to introduce you to the guys.
Does that start up in like December or January or something?
Yeah, typically after the 1st of the year.
Oh, good, okay. And next up, we have Superintendent's Corner.
Just very quickly, I want to thank the Mitchell School PTA, they invited me to their meeting last week, November 20th. Had a great conversation, they asked some great questions, we, I brought some things back to think about, I did speak to IT and John about a couple of things that they had asked me about and about the calendar, how we can make the calendar a little bit more accessible for the district calendar, because now, we used to be able to see it on the homepage, on the district's homepage and see everybody's calendar. Now we have to go to each individual school, so we are looking at that and hopefully going to tweak that. I do have a meeting, just to let you know, with Brian Noble, who is the Town Administrator, he's coming down next week, on Wednesday, to meet with John and I to start the budget process. They are having directors' meetings. However, Mr. Noble and I discussed, we met last week for a few minutes, and we discussed that the schools are sort of a different cat. John will go up to the meetings up at Town Hall when they meet with all of the departments just to keep us in the loop, but when it comes to really developing our budget with the town, it'll be myself, John, the Subcommittee, and Mr. Noble as we move through this. It's just, we're a big piece of that pie, so we need to work with him and discuss with him and the Finance Committee, so. The, tonight, we had the bonfire, it's packed out there, a lot of little kids, which I love to see the young kids, the Mitchell School and the Central School, a lot of kids out there, a lot of 7th and 8th graders, which is very nice for them to come out and to see and anticipate and to get excited about what's to come. But I can, I want to thank all of the athletes that were out there this evening, there was a lot of kids out there, helping the younger kids play the games that they had, they had a soccer shootout, they had a powder puff game with the girls, girl, junior girls against the senior girls, so that was fun. I want to thank Tim Heron, Chief Heron, and the rest of the fire, the Fire Department, they came out, they were all out there for safety, they even said we can, let's put a little bit more on here with accelerator to really get this going. And so it's supportive and it's a, it's a nice thing to have us all work together on a night like tonight. The Hall of Fame was on Saturday night, it was a tremendous night, it was so nice to see people come back, to be honored, to hear the stories of many of the athletes and educators, or students who were educated here in East Bridgewater is just, you know, we take things for granted. You know, names, we've got a, Ron Colow was a Super Bowl ring for Cleveland Browns, you've got Albie Stonkis that was on every, you know, has awards and a track record that hasn't even been broken yet, the 1959 Division Class D Basketball Championship, our only championship in boys' basketball, six out of the 11, I think we're here, and one of the guys came in from Alaska. So we had a tremendous, and the women that were inducted into the Hall of Fame, played on, played on national soccer teams, were all ECAC, were All-American at the high school and at college level at Division 1. We had, you know, Bridget Larkin, who plays for, her daughters are in school now, played basketball at Pitt. I mean, so our kids, past and future, have a great home here, doing well, and I think the Hall of Fame was a nice way to start off. It took me four and a half years to get it here, and Tom Kenny will tell you that, but, and he did a tremendous job. John Shea, right up to 5:55, before it started at 6 o'clock, even ran up to Brockton and met with the old times, or the old Boston Globe reporter-
Cartoonist.
Cartoonist, and had him sign one of the cartoon figures of Jim Dandy?
Jimmy Moxley.
But they called him Jim Dandy, yeah. Jimmy Moxley, his daughter came and accepted, his daughter, yeah, came and accepted the award for him, and John had a framed, an autographed cartoon from the-
Enterprise, 68, 1968.
I mean, it was just really, I mean, those are, those are memories and those are things that we wanted to highlight. And Coach St. George was here, and he had lots to say. And John Cap, John Cappuccioni received the induction, and that guy is still a brick house when he came across stage, it's like watching a Mack truck walk at you. And that, the guy who accepted for Ron Colow, he played with him, his hands were, he shook my hand and I was like, did I have my hand back, it was huge. So it was really neat. And Senator McCarthy, always, Bob McCarthy has tremendous stories. So I want to thank, congratulations to all of the inductees for our first ever Hall of Fame, but I also want to thank the committee, they were outstanding. Next year, you know, this year was 21 people, it was our, it was a large group, and now we're in the mix, so we'll, you know, hopefully between 10 and 12 people for the next year or so. It was great. We talked about my, my goals on the, on the evaluation, you had given me some, some thoughts. So I went through, and if, if you look, if you go through your-
3, 4, 5, 6.
I don't know where Barbara put mine. Yeah, mine.
Is this the copy you want?
So Superintendent will meet with two times per month with Building Principals, discuss with each administrator, versus design practices used to achieve student goals. We want to keep it student-centered. I always can have discussions with my teachers on, with my principals on other areas, but the most significant way to increase student achievement is by focusing on the principal addressing needs and strengths in the classroom with the teacher, and it's called, and it's supervision. Improve student growth and writing proficiency district-wide by the implementation and fidelity to the teaching of literacy skills in all content areas. The success of the goal will be measured by the MCATS results 2, 4, and 8 along grade level assessments. We are creating grade level assessments, we talked about how will we do that, what we need to, the principals will hold teachers to fidelity on the literacy skills and the curriculum that we are using that is put forth by the district.
What do you mean by 2, 4, and 8?
Grades?
Second grade doesn't-
I, I just saw that, that's why I was like, I was just like, no, that's not the right one.
Three, 4, and 8?
4 and 8.
4, I don't think they do, the writing part in grade 3 though.
No, 5, 8.
Yeah.
5 and 8. Yeah. That was me, I think, because before we had just literacy.
Gotcha.
So it should be 5 and 8.
Yeah, sorry about that. Barbara and I go back and forth so quickly that sometimes I forget. Organize the budget building process that is inclusive and that is designed to inform the public of needs, that was okay, we kept that one. 4, create school facilities committee for future school building projects. In that sort of queue right now, trying to get things settled here on the Boiler Project, and then the new, the roof project at Central School, you're going to have to sign off on that, we did get some paperwork on that, I'll have Ellen sign that, that we are in. It did go up 3/4 of, 3/4 of percent, I believe, today, so we're at 54.6% that they will reimburse the district, so that's great. And those are things that we're-
The funding went up?
Yeah, our funding went up a little bit, by 3/4 of a percent, which is terrific.
57.
So we'll be talking with that with Mr. Noble as well, I mean, those are things, we want to keep him in the loop, and then going forward, we'll get everybody to come together for our Facilities Committee. Professional development, obviously, we continue to do that for the district. The one of them was number 6, was support the junior, senior high school principal an ongoing opportunity to improve and define student academic and social emotional support provided by all staff, especially guidance, especially in the Guidance Department. Are you, is everybody all set with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, we just needed to vote on 2, 3, and 6, because we had already voted on 1, 4, and 5.
I would just vote on the whole, that you accept that, I would just-
Accept all the goals.
Yeah.
So we can do it, we can do all the action items later, the man likes it when I do them all at the end.
And just my last, before I send it over to John, Mr. Shea, would be if you go into your packet, you'll see the October 1 enrollment. We're at 568 at the Central, 639 at Gordon, and at the junior, senior high school, we're at 1010, we're at 2217, total.
And that, that's down 34 students year-over-year, Liz, do you have any concern about that, or that's just sort of the way the numbers fell?
I think it's the way the numbers are going, I don't think it's, we had a very large group in kindergarten, for, two years ago, this year it was a little bit lower. But I just spoke to Kate, we're going to have another big, we're having a large class come in this kindergarten. So the census will go again, when she goes, I don't know, a couple of weeks, I think, or more towards January, February, she'll do it a couple of times to get some quick numbers, but right now, what they're thinking is it'll be over at 160 again. So, you know, I think it, I think it's like the ebbs and flows of-
Look at grade 11, it went from negative 15 and then to grade 12, up 32 people.
We can't really control who lives here, but it's the 8 to 9 numbers that we want to keep an eye on.
Yeah, that's-
Right. I don't think that, you know, I think that the, going to the Aggie or going to the Southeastern, I think those are great poss, great vokes for us to attend. I don't have a lot of kids, I can honestly say, I don't have a lot of parents or a lot of students that want to leave East Bridgewater and just, and just a school choice out. We don't have that. We see a few kids that will want to stay, they might have been living in the Whitman-Hanson area, K through 6, their parents moved here, they want to stay there, so they made school choice in over there. I don't see a lot of kids wanting to leave. We did have a couple of issues, the kids were just unhappy here, and we have some kids that were in West Bridgewater that were unhappy there, or we have some kids in Abington that weren't happy there. So I will speak to those superintendents and we sort of trade off students, you know, so they can be successful and feel successful. So, anyway, that's really what I have. I want, Happy Thanksgiving to, tomorrow's a half-day for the entire district, we come back in on Monday, and then the, you've got the winter concert right off the bat, and then there's, you know, we've got the concerts both at Mitchell School and the high school. We have a lot of, you know, John has meetings, I have meetings off, out of district, it's going to get, December, January, very, very busy. The 1.5 million, or the 1.5 billion student opportunity acts did, did pass, the governor has signed. I feel confident that we'll do well, but I want to make, I just want to make one statement, that the most, the, the allotment of most of the money will go to the Big Five. It will go to Fall River, New Bedford, Brockton, Springfield, and Worcester. That's where you will see most of the money go, to help the urbans, to help the ELL population, to help students. And it's, that's where most of your money's going to go, in the inner city, into the, into the urbans. We will see some upswing, West Bridgewater will not see the upswing that we see. And I say that because Tim's sitting here, so he, he hears this and he knows this. We will get some upswing, there are parameters to that funding, there are parameters on percentages of that funding and where we can put that funding. It is there for students and it is there for strategic planning on where to base, on where to push that money into academics and social, emotional supports. So I just wanted to, I wanted to thank, I want to thank our legislative group that's with us. They have been out there, you know, walking the beat, and, you know, Alyssa Sullivan and Mr. Brady and-
Michelle Dubois.
Michelle Dubois and Walter Timmeltie, they really are out there beating the drum for us, and so thank you to all of them and our selectmen who are trying to push for it as well. And so that's where we are.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll get some estimates soon. So I don't have, we don't have exact numbers to give you.
Thank you. So next up, we have the first reading of proposed changes to the Meal Charge Policy File, EFD. So I wanted to, I didn't bring it up during the report of the Standing Committees, but when I spoke to Jim Hardy this past Friday, and because we were going through Section B, and I had a bunch of questions for Section B, and in that section, it talks about adoption of policies, there's a couple of policies in there that talks about our school committee policies. And what I found was, what was explained to me by Jim Hardy is that the way that we do our three-reading process of the, of the policies before we actually adopt them, so, and I talked to Barbara Polisi about this too, she said, we've been doing it that way ever since she can remember, since she's been here, and so when I talked to Jim, he said, there's, there is no three-reading, three-reading process, that the interpretation of the current policy is that you send out the policy that you want to review, you give it to the members, when you give them the agenda, they review it, then you bring it to the meeting, and if everybody agrees on it and likes it, and there's no changes, then you can vote on it at the first, the first meeting. If there are changes or tweaks to it, then you bring it back to the second meeting, and then if everybody's happy at that time, then you vote on it and you adopt the policy. So we do not need to go through the rigmarole of the three-reading process any longer, because that's not the accurate interpretation of the policy. So I just wanted to bring that up, bring that up, so as long as everybody's okay with the correct interpretation of the policy, then we can move forward and do it the correct way. Okay? You're chirping. I guess everybody's fine with it, okay. So, so then-
And do you need to document that anywhere in our policy manual, or is that just, it's there, it's just how it was interpreted, is what you're saying, so we're good?
Okay.
But you need a motion to accept that policy.
To accept this policy? Oh, yeah, I didn't get to, so it's in the packet, the Meal Charge Policy, that's EFD, and the changes are on the backside of the page. And they're adding the highlighted in yellow and then deleting the, the blue highlighted. I could go over that. It says, the part that they're adding, the sentence reads, "If notices do not result in payment, parents will receive a phone call from food services," and so the part that's going to be added is, "Guidance or Building Principal." So not only could they receive a phone call from food services, it would be guidance or Building Principal. And then the next sentence that's going to be added is, "Prior to the end of the school year, parents and/or guardians must make arrangements with the school district to fully or partially pay the outstanding balance." And then, under refunds, the sentence that would be added is, "All refunds must be requested within one year of graduation." And then the part that would be removed is, "Failure to maintain up-to-date accounts may result in a delay of a student's extracurricular school services, especially those that are fee-based, graduating seniors may lose the ability to participate in certain graduation-related activities."
That is deleted, you cannot do that.
Correct.
Right.
It's being removed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that people understand, that needs to be removed, you can't hold somebody from graduating.
Violates master rule on Chapter 93, Section 49A and C.
I make the motion to accept these changes to the Meal Charge Policy, both the additions and deletion.
Second?
Motion by Trista, second by Gordon. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just, the only thing I wanted to add is that, to accept it at one meeting, I think, is, is fine, as long as there's background given, either by the Policy Subcommittee or by administration, as to, hey, why do we need these changes? And my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, the goal is, is that the, some of the students' accounts had gone into arrears and becomes a, is a real kind of a problem, and so we're trying to get ahead of that, and that's about the extent of it, is my understanding of it, right?
Thank you, so it was motioned by Trista and seconded by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. We did not save that for the end. Okay. Okay. Thank you. And then next up, John Shea will give us a report on a list of things. Go ahead, John.
Sure, we'll start out with where we are currently with the 2020 budget. So if you take out the first page that I have titled, "East Bridgewater Public Schools Operating Budget", fiscally at 2020, school year at November 22, 2019. You can see we have an available balance in the non-salary line of $163,000. And of course, salary, because we don't encumber salaries of $13 million. At some point, we will encumber salaries, but we're not there yet. Compared to last year at this time, we had a non-salary available balance of $394. So you can see there's a pretty significant difference between the two time periods. And there are a couple of concerns that I wanted to share. There's three areas in special education where we're seeing some significant increases. The first one, therapy services. Those are vision, physical therapy, occupational therapy, BCBA services, home services. Right now, we have an encumbrance and expense that's in the fourth column over of $220,000 and a budget of $195,000. So there is a variance there over budget of about $25,000. Increase from prior year of almost $35,000. You know, we still have the year to go. Some of those services, we encumber at the beginning for estimates of what we think will be spent. Some of those could be reduced. So it's something we will be watching on a weekly basis. But right now, it's an area for concern. The next one is a significant area of concern. It's the homeless transportation. We have a budget of $34,000. And at this point in time, we're estimating an expense of $89,000. That is a significant increase. The budget is based upon an average of like the last four years. So we have not really been spending that much money in homeless transportation. We have seen a very large increase in the number of homeless students and where we're transporting them from.
We have North Boston right now coming in. It's a long way.
Is this new?
Well, it's wherever...
It's part of the McKinney-Vento.
Right. Wherever the child was last in school. Thank you.
And not to talk about anything regarding student privacy, but in a case like this, it's the parents' preference still to have the child come to West Bridgewater, even though it's a great distance.
And plus, sometimes it could be, it's where the, if they're homeless, it's where the state puts the family. And they'll keep them here because that's how, a little bit easier for the state to continue to keep them in one district so they can follow them.
And John, as far as the actual transportation and the cost, sometimes there's not really an ability to negotiate the cost, correct? I mean, it's not necessarily the same, or is it necessarily the same as going up to bid, right? For, sometimes you have to just work with limited options. Is that correct?
There are limited options, especially...
Yeah, yeah.
Driving.
So you could have to use like a car service?
Right. We use van services.
Yeah, yeah. So that kind of impacts...
Local, you have more opportunities for negotiation. But long distance, you're really kind of stuck.
You're much better off buying someone a car.
Well, yeah.
But this is something that's just happens to, in this year, we happen to have kids who are farther away. We don't have the control over it.
So I'll continue to monitor this, come up with a plan. You know, there's different ways you can address a budget issue like this. The one thing, though, I did speak with the town administrator today. Homeless reimbursement is reimbursable. Historically, we've been getting about 34 cents on the dollar for that. It has been going to the town's general fund. He said, "Well, it makes sense that something like this should go to the school." So, you know, $89,000 expense, reimbursement of 34, I think it was about 34% on it. We'll come back to the school in 2022. So, I mean, he, there is a recognition from the town administrator that...
And this will be the first time that it would be reimbursed directly to the schools versus the town?
Well, it would still be deposited in the town. We would just have to put an article at town meeting to transfer.
True, yeah.
Right, yeah.
But this would be the initiating of the first.
Right.
But he's willing to allow us to write the article?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But just real quick, do we see this as like a trend line? Where we're gonna expect year, next year, we're gonna base our budget numbers based on the $89,000? But it could conceivably just drop right back down to what it's been for the historical year average?
You never know what students you're going to get. It's, you don't know. That, this is something that we are talking about at the state level. That this is very, the McKinney-Vento, we understand. And certainly, nobody wants to hurt a child. However, this is just, when you're moving kids around or having them riding at the end for an hour and a half to get to the school that they did last year, it's really difficult. And plus, it takes a year sometimes for that money to catch up to the school. So you're always, we're always chasing the money to get reimbursed. And the school that they just went to or the school that they're not are chasing us to figure out where the student should belong or where they should go. So I think they're trying to find a better, a better way to do this. But, you know, you have domestic violence issues, domestic violence issues. You've got divorce issues. You've got things that are just causing homelessness or child in foster care. And it is, you know, that's, so... We'll try to get, I'm hoping to get a little bit more clarity as we continue to move forward with this.
Yeah, no, this is not a complaint to me.
Oh, no, yeah.
This is more just about, figure out, you know, how do we plan ahead moving forward? We have kids sitting on the bus for an hour and a half?
Yes.
To get here and an hour and a half to get home?
Yeah.
That breaks my heart.
Yep.
And this is a perfect example of the sped reserve. Created this sped reserve. The second one, there will be fluctu, sorry, the third one, there will be fluctuations during the year. Joe and I have been reviewing the encumbrances for sped transportation. But right now, we look to be about $35,000 over budget. I'm not too concerned about that because usually by the end of the year, that seems to, once we start going through the POs and everything, it seems to drop a little bit. I think the main concern I have is the homeless transportation.
So, John, my biggest concern looking at that, I mean, I know all these things can jump around, but we're on pace to spend a quarter of a million dollars on homeless transportation this year. I mean, that's not just full year overseas.
No, that's full year.
Oh, because as of, as of 11/22?
Yeah, it is as of 11/22, but we'll estimate for the full year.
So this is right now, your estimation for where we'll be on June 30?
Oh, yes.
All right. Are all these numbers that, your estimation for where we'll be on June 30? Okay. Feel better about that.
Any more questions on that? The next, next item I wanted to walk through is the revolving fund balances. And I'll just focus on a couple of them. School lunch has a balance of $221,000. Last year at this time was $294,000. And the reason for that decrease is there was $30,000 spent on tables and $37,000, actually a little more of an electrical, but on a combi oven. So the cafeteria spent money on capital projects. So that's why you're seeing a decrease there. You may also notice on the sped tuitioned revolving line, there's a negative balance. I need to do some reclasses on that line to one of the grants. So once I get a few free minutes, I will reclass some expenses out of that line and some TA expenses to the grant line. So that negative will be, will not be there at the next meeting. In addition, we're still waiting for some revenue from some of the schools for tuition.
Is it still going down? Or is that just, I had a question about something a little lower, but I didn't know?
Go ahead, go for it.
So little Vikings, do we typically spend that on anything particular? Or we just kind of keep that aside for what may come up?
Little Vikings, we will need to discuss further to talk about either spending that money on additional programs or reducing the expense to attend the program.
I was hoping to say, all right, like scholarships or lower fees?
And we do do some of that already, but...
Kind of went through fairly quickly on that because I have the year-end report I wanted to spend a little time on. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, year-end report. I numbered these pages. So you can see page one is the expenditure summary FY '19, all fund types. This is, this is a really good summary if you ever want to understand how much we spend on the schools. This is an accumulation of all the information, all the information that I provide in the end-of-year report. And this is actually right out of the, the top line is right out of the report. And it shows you everything I go through to reconcile to make sure I've included everything that I need to include. And I share this with the auditor and I share this with the town accountant, treasurer, and town manager to make sure everyone is at agreement that I have included everything I should have included on that end-of-year report. Because that end-of-year report is what's used for net school spending, per pupil expenditure, among other things. So I'll focus on the first line, total expenditure, all funds. That $20,305,79 is what we, what we spent on, out of the operating budget. I call it the operating budget because that's pretty much what we vote on here as a committee, the budget. The second item is what the town appropriates to us. So there are expenses on the town side that pertain to the school. So when I file the end-of-year report, I need to include those expenses. And I'll show you on the next page what those expenses are. Column three is what we, what we have expensed in federal grants. Column four is what we have expensed in state grants. Column five is what we've expensed in using circuit breaker funds. Column six is what we've expensed using private grants and gifts. Column seven is what we've expensed with school choice and other tuitions. And the majority of that is preschool expenses out of the athletic fund and AEP. And in column 10, other local receipts expenses. And then school lunch in column nine. And you can see the grant total of $34,820. $34,820. So the next page, because it's a large number, it's $11,27,284, are the expenses that the town allocates to us. And I received reports at the end of the year from these different areas. And these are the reports and backup from these different departments. And these are the expenses that I add to our budgeted costs for the end-of-year report. So in 2019, you can see the DPW. We had salaries. We had other expenses like electric, sorry, not electricity, but repair and maintenance for grounds, equipment, elevator repair, uniform rentals, heat, oil and gas, custodial supplies, et cetera, in the amount of $627,000. Grounds expense of $131,000 and snow removal of $80,000. And then there are, in the next block, there are certain articles. You know, when we propose or go to town meeting for a special article for defibrillators, I also need to include that in the end-of-year report. So that's what these, these different items are. These are articles. And then there are expenses in the bottom, bottom block from the town accountant's office. And that's electricity and some of the expenses for Hubtech, which is our, Hubtech, which is our IT maintenance group and also soft write and IT salaries. On the next page, at the top block is from the board of selectmen's office. And that's pretty much all the insurances that the town pays for that are then allocated to us on the end-of-year report. The police in the next block, that's the school resource officer mainly. And then from the treasurer's office, you have some allocation of staff in the treasurer's office. And then you have long-term debt, principal and interest, and the insurances, health, dental, life insurance, pension. So I gave you a summary of last year.
What's the, the long-term, long-term debt interest?
Yep. That's mainly for the school.
Okay.
It's the majority of it.
And John, just for clarification, actually, I'm following along with it. These numbers, if somebody will look at these numbers, they'd say, "Well, wait a minute. We voted a budget of whatever it was, $21 million, whatever the number is." But these are expenses that are allocated to the school but not part of our direct budget that we fund. The town funds these?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Do these external costs factor into our per pupil spending as far as the situation?
Show you on the next. The next question was...
Yeah.
You have any, oh, is that with those two? So page four and five and six. So in the, in the first worksheet I gave you, I gave you one line item with the total. Right? This breaks out that, those line items by all the different categories that I have to report. So if you go to page five, if you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see total expenditure, all funds, $20,305,000 in that first column. That ties out to the first page, the $20,305,000. So this, this is just giving you more detail on that $34,820,000 as it's reported on the end-of-year report. So what's included in per pupil expenditure? Everything but the red.
Okay.
Everything but the?
The red.
The red, okay.
So per pupil expenditure excludes debt service, principal and interest?
Regional schools.
Yep. So what I, what I tried to do is, okay, let's see where we will end up in 2019 as a per pupil expenditure. And excluding sped tuitions, I believe we will end up at... And excluding, uh, sped tuitions, I believe we will end up at twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, or right around there.
And that's not including any money that we might get extra from the state?
This is, uh, per pupil expenditure, so what was spent per?
Oh, okay.
FTE, student.
Is that, um, how much, roughly how much is that, that an increase?
So if you go to page seven?
I knew you'd be ready for that. Lead you into it.
If you go to the next page, seven, uh, in two thousand eight, in two thousand sixteen, we were at nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one. In two thousand seventeen, uh, ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. Two thousand eighteen, we are at twelve thousand. And two thousand nineteen, I'm estimating twelve, about twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty. And I say I'm estimating, I'm, um, I'm confident on the expense numbers, but what I'm not confident on right now is the, uh, the FTE count, which I'm waiting to get from the state. So I, I estimated the number of FTEs, student FTEs, to come with that, up with that twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty, so, I, I think it's pretty close, gonna be pretty close to that.
John, page six?
Yep.
There, there's two boxes that have green PPE calculations, and I don't understand why the second one is higher.
Because one includes special ed, uh, tuitions.
She can't use?
No, you can.
Okay.
Yeah, if you look at page seven?
Yep.
Page seven has, uh, two calculations, in district per pupil expenditure? And also total.
Okay, so what's the, what's the, what number is the state gonna use when they compare? I mean, are they gonna use both?
They use both.
They use both?
Yeah. But I, if, if you really wanna compare, uh, school to school, I mean, especially with, especially with tuition, could really vary a lot per school, that's why they, they break it out, call it in district. That's what most will, will compare, in district.
We won't see any effects of any extra money we get from the state until twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, for the, oh, I mean, that's what I meant, for the per pupil expenditure.
Well, I...
We're doing not bad.
Yeah, I mean, any extra money we receive, it, it's not money we receive, it's money that's spent.
But if you look at it, you see the increases where we said that we were gonna allocate funding, which is getting more teachers, getting more instructional technology, getting more per pupil services. Yes, do we increase, um, in administration? Yep. But if you look at the areas where we made the most increases, it's in our teachers, it's in our professional development, it's in our instruction materials, guidance and counseling people, uh, pupil services, or in special education allocation, um, operations and maintenance, and insurance and retirement programs, as you know, are, they're gonna continue to move.
So it's going back to the teachers?
Yeah, it's going back to the instructional, for the kids, right? And that's, that's how you move per pupil.
Yes. Thank you.
Good job, John.
Thank you, John.
No, that's, that's incredible. Those of us who are old enough and were lucky enough to live through when things weren't like this, um, meaning back when we did, uh, reduce the deficit, um, I, I have a much better, healthier respect for the complexity of what you do, and when you present it like this, you, you can't help, at least anybody who's, is paying attention at all can't help but have much more confidence than we've ever had in the past that, okay, it's complex, but you're really on it and watching it, and, uh, kudos to you for putting this all together and explaining it to us, and God bless you for doing it every day, every week, because there's a lot. I mean, the people at the town hear that big number, and that's what they react to, but to see it broken out and all of its complexity, uh, is just, just astounding. So, thank you for doing what you do on our behalf, thank you.
Well, this is where the transparency is.
Joanne does help.
Liz and John, I gotta tell you that, I mean, I think the thing I'm most impressed about every time we go through these numbers is the revolving funds balance sheet, you know, and I look back at, on the far right of this document, and this is when my wife and I moved to East Bridgewater, and this is what we moved into. And I think people in West are kinda sick of me coming to our cabinet meetings going, come on, look at what East is doing, how are we not able to, you know, model after what they're doing? And this is a huge success story for our district to be as healthy as we are in these areas, so hats off to both of you. And this is around the time when you came in as well, Liz, or shortly before that, and so for both of us. It's wonderful.
I, I...
Great job, John.
Yeah, I, I think that the, the, what would, if I were making the notes today, I would put in bold letters fiscal responsibility, and that's, that's what this reflects. It, it isn't by the seat of anybody's pants, particularly yours, it's all thought out, it's tracked and recorded and, and watched and monitored, and that's exactly what we need, and so it's all great stuff, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, so earlier when I was talking to John, uh, oh, you have one more? Go ahead.
Just wanted to give an update on the subs, uh, substitute staffing bid. So we, uh, went out to bid, wrote a bid, went out to bid for, uh, substitute staff, staffing service, services. Uh, we, we received four bids, um, we received four bid, um, submissions for different companies. Uh, we interviewed them last week. We are, uh, reviewing references, uh, today, actually, and I think Amy may be wrapping them up tomorrow, um, so we should be making a decision, hopefully tomorrow, Gina in tomorrow?
Yep. Gina is here, she, I asked her to stay out at the bonfire, uh, for us so that John and I could come into the meeting, but, yes.
Yes, we, we had four great responses to the bids. All four companies were very experienced.
So can we have your subs that are existing now, once you sign?
You want our furniture, you want our subs? So, um, earlier when I was talking to John before our meeting started, he, um, he has some packet, and it, there's stipulations on, you alluded to it earlier, um, Liz, when you were talking about what we can spend the money on when we get the money from the state, that there has to be some three-year plan that we have to submit to the state. So I was wondering if John could, like, briefly, briefly talk about that?
Well, I, I think Liz, uh, mentioned, uh, a, a lot of it. It, by April two thousand and twenty, we, we have to develop a three-year plan, and in that three-year plan, um, it, they, they defined certain things that should be focused on, uh, expanding early childhood development, purchasing curriculum materials and equipment, I think, uh, Liz probably went through most of it, social, social, emotional.
So it's not just a lump sum to say, here, go fund your district?
Oh, no, you have to develop a three-year plan.
Exactly. No, and I think that needs to be understood.
Right, put on that.
Because I think people who aren't familiar with this whole process might say, you know, oh, well, you just got, or, you know, you're getting this lump sum of money.
Yeah.
No, 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 that's not how it works. It has to be dedicated to certain, you know, areas of development, like you said, and it has to be written out in a plan, so...
I think that that's one reason it took us so long for the governor to sign the bill and for it to get through the House and for it to get to the Senate, because, you know, everybody's gonna lobby for this money, regardless of who it is, you know, we all want it, and it's a big, it, it's a big piece, and, um, and there's a lot to do in schools, but if you look at the urbans, they have a lot to do. Um, and that's where most of the money will be allocated, and, and that funding formula that these guys use and, or that comes from the state, it's hard to understand, but that's how it's gonna be pushed out. But that's another reason why John and I are meeting with Brian, uh, Mr. Noble on Wednesday of next week to start this process. First of all, to start our budget process for next year, and just to say, okay, this is where we were, this is where we want to be, how close can we get there? And then with the budget subcommittee to start talking about some of the things that we're looking for. And then, once we can get that started, look down in three years, where do we wanna be? And it's really four years from now. So what does that three-year plan look like? And how do we use these, the monies, the money allocated to the district? How do we use that to allocate and to fund, uh, curriculum, instruction, professional development, social, emotional?
Any idea, any, when they might let us know when?
I would not even guess on that at this point. It took almost since Ju, almost to Ju, from July, August to now.
Yeah, well, usually the governor's budget comes out January first, I believe, so...
Oh, so we might know like January, February?
Oh, I thought you were asking, when will we know when he's going to say, you know?
Oh, no, I, I was wondering when we might have an idea of how much we might be receiving.
Oh.
Yeah, I think it's January first, when the governor's budget comes out.
Oh, that's good. That's better than what I was thinking. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do not see anyone here for public comment.
Did you look twice? Tell me, have you, have you taken a comment tonight?
Somebody, sometimes there's somebody in the chair back there.
Can I see? No, Ellen, I, I don't see anybody.
Thanks for the comic relief. First up, we have, um, the first action item is, I would take a motion on, uh, to approve the school committee meeting minutes from November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. Moved by, moved by Gordon, second by, that was Tim? Tim, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Rob and Tim sound a lot alike. Well, that was unanimous. Um, at this time, I would take a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant twenty-one SV dated November twentieth, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, that sounded like Tim. Moved by Gordon, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. And I would take a motion to approve payroll warrant twenty PS dated November thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and twenty-two PS dated November sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gordon, second by Trista, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. And I would take a motion to approve, uh, oh, we don't need to waive any, so we'll skip that one. I would take a motion, already approved the meal charge policy, so that's approved. I would take a motion to approve Superintendent Lago's FY twenty goal evaluation indicators, revise the numbers two, three, and six, so we're approving all of them at the same time, so that's one through six.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gordon, second by Rob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. And I would take a motion to approve the request of Jamie Escalera, central school teacher, to be granted two personal days on Thursday, January second, twenty twenty, and Friday, January third, twenty twenty, due to a scheduled family vacation, which was planned prior to being hired as an employee with the East Bridgewater Public School District. And, um, the superintendent recommends the approval of Mrs. Escalera's request.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon?
Second.
Second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
And that was unanimous. And I take a motion to approve the disposal of elementary desks and chairs. Motion, anybody?
Moved.
Moved by Tim?
Second.
Second by Gordon, and, um...
It's in your, it's in your package, Gordon, there's a declaration and also...
Oh, I didn't see that one, okay.
The discussion is, um, what school are we getting rid of the chairs and desks from?
They're in storage at the Mitchell School.
Oh.
They're from all over the district.
Oh, so out of curiosity, how would you be disposing of them?
I would follow the new policy, which you voted in.
That was a trick question, John.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. And, um, I would like to thank EB Cam, because I forgot to do it at the beginning of the meeting, for always recording our meetings. Thank you, EB Cam, and all the volunteers. And unless the superintendent has nothing else?
Happy Thanksgiving, have a great holiday.
Wish everyone happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving. And at this time, we take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gordon, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.